I move we return to open session, second.
Shaner.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
I move we adjourn the closed session, second.
Scott.
Aye.
Gretkin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Shaner.
Aye.
Call the roll please for the main meeting.
Gretkin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Shaner.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters.
We stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance, please.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the good life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Proclamation, I got one commendation here today. And it reads as follows, whereas Pete Gretkin has been a valued member of the city council for the city of Sioux City for the past eight years, Gretkin was sworn in for the first time on January 2nd, 2014, and was sworn in for his second term on January 2nd, 2018. Whereas before city council, Gretkin served as an esteemed member of the Sioux City Police Department for thirty-seven years, ten months and fifteen days. Gretkin started at the police department on May 16th, 1972, and retired as a captain, a position he held the last twenty-three years of his career. Whereas Gretkin has provided great leadership and vision for the city of Sioux City, some of his key achievements include the Chris Larson Park Riverfront redevelopment, the Siouxland Expo Center, the Warrior Building renovation, and many more projects. Gretkin shows a true commitment to the Sioux City community and will continue to be a positive voice for the growth of our community in the future as a private citizen. Now therefore, I Robert E. Scott, Mayor of the City of Sioux City, Iowa, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Sioux City do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to extend this commendation to Pete Gretkin for his many years of service and dedication to the citizens of Sioux City. We wish him the best in his new chapter.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you. Just real quickly, I won't talk long, although I like to sometime. Really, I'm serious. The, it's been my pleasure and my honor to be able to sit here at this long desk with a variety, not a large number, because Keith was here for three years and Alex, now maybe the last five or six, and then Julie and Rhonda. Great people to work with, but more than that, the entire city. My love for the city is unquestioned, at least in my mind. I, I think, I told my wife a long time ago, if I'm going to get involved in things, I want to be surrounded by good people. Just makes it a lot easier. And you can keep a smile on your face, and hopefully at the end of the day, you go home and the cheeks are a little sore from laughing. So that's, that's really the important part, but, but still, very good people, from the bottom to the top, and I will miss each and every one of them, and I thank you all for your support over the last eight years, two terms, and certainly Bob and Dan and the city manager and the ladies that Heidi and Amber and Nicole have been great to work with, and the entire city has. So I really appreciate the acknowledgement and wish everybody the best as we move forward from here. Lot of good things yet to happen.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll move to interviews. Building and Housing Code Board, Robert Burton, DeAndrea. Oh, there you are, come on up. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve.
Thank you. Robert DeAndrea. Twenty-six-plus-year electrician in the area. Been in management at Metro Electric for about seventeen years. Current part owner. Been around the industry, I'm a third-generation electrician. I've enjoyed Sioux City, grew up around here and lived in this area my entire life. I don't currently live in town, but my company's in this town, I work in this town, I live around this town, so I like to, as Pete said, support what we play. And a friend of mine, Barney, stepping down from the board, and there was an opening, and I felt I was able to serve in that capacity with the history and experience I have, so.
Questions?
No, thank you very much for applying.
Yep.
I'm glad you.
You'll enjoy it.
I'm glad you applied.
Appreciate it.
And Barney, Barney was the connection or motivator for having you apply.
Barney for about as many years too.
Good, oh yes.
Every time he came off a board meeting and stuff, we'd always visit about what's going on.
Great.
So it just seemed natural to take that next step, so.
All right.
Making the application.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Good to see you. Municipal Board of Trustees, Museum Board of Trustees, sorry, Stacy Alex. Stacy, are you here to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve?
Hi there. I am just very grateful to the Sioux City Public Museum. It's one of the first places I went when researching the area, when my husband and I were considering applying for jobs in the area, and I was really pleasantly surprised. I teach Latino Studies and Spanish at Morningside University, and I was very, very pleased to see that the digital archives at the museum include artifacts from the Latino community here in Siouxland. And that's been really essential to my work and crucial to what I'm able to do with my students. I'm also grateful that the museum is so accountable to our public schools, and my son has greatly enjoyed all the opportunities that they make available, even in a pandemic, when we were all shut inside. They made, they made activities available to the kids even then. I also enjoy getting my students involved and volunteering at the museum, and I'd really like to continue supporting their work and making the institution available to our diverse communities, and one of the ways that I feel that they're doing that is to consider language access and to consider programming that is really, really appealing to lots of diverse perspectives, including cultural perspectives. So you probably know that Irving Elementary School is a bilingual program, and my son is growing up bilingual and really did enjoy their Day of the Dent event, and that's something that I think we can, we can expand on, so. That's all I have for you.
Questions? All sounds good, thanks for making the application.
Sounds great. Sounds like you've got some really good ideas to add, and I love it that you checked out the amenities before you decided to move here. We've been working very hard on improving them, so thanks for mentioning that.
Well, I mentioned it in my job applications, in my interview with Morningside, so I think it really helped me, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Tim Seaman. Got time with your busy travel schedule to, to serve on a board for us?
I'll need a police escort to get back across town real quick. I just want to say congratulations to Councilman Gretkin too. I've served on a couple of boards with Pete, and I know you take those board meetings as serious as you do budget talks or whatever else, we appreciate that. I know other board members have said the same thing, so congratulations, John, well done. I learned a long time ago, it was easier to help move the city forward by being on a board than it was being elected, like you folks. And so that's why I've kind of decided to participate on boards and commissions in the past. As you know, I have in the past, a couple of them, and I'm not on any right now. I think the direction of the Parks and Rec Department is clearly high and above where it's ever been before, and would be, you know, be grateful to be part of their work as they continue to move forward.
Questions?
I'm, I'm pleased that you did make the application, because on the prior boards you've served on, Tim, you've given it your all as well. And have taken it seriously, just like Mr. Gretkin. So you'd be a super addition to this, to Parks and Rec, because they've got a lot going on.
You weren't married back then, so you had a lot of time, I just want to make sure you got the time. Thanks.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Consent agendas, items three through fourteen B, considering the pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. Please come up the podium if you want to speak on an agenda as I read it. State your name and address so it can be recorded for follow-up. If you want to come up under the, if you don't, not on the agenda, on a non-agenda item, please come up under Citizen Concerns. Again, state your name and address for the record. I'll move the consent agenda. Second. Reading of this December thirteenth city council minutes. Four is a resolution accepting a donation from Parks and Rec Foundation for the Cone Park Project. Five is a resolution accepting the comprehensive annual financial report. Six are actions relating to annual reports. Items six A through six C are motions approving annual reports for the Human Rights Commission, the Senior Advisory Committee, Parks and Skywalk System Board of Trustees, Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, and the Yamanashi City Sister City Committee.
Mayor.
Yes.
I have a few comments to make on these annual reports. The first one being on the Human Rights Commission, is Karen? Is Karen here?
Yep.
Oh, there you are, behind the podium. I just wanted to point out to the council and to the mayor, in your report, Karen, you talked about during fiscal year 2021, a total of forty new cases were filed. That's a lot. In your other paragraph, you talked about your backlog has grown and is of significant concern, concern as it has been with me over the years, and you've done a good job to address the cases that are at hand and, and either have them resolved or dismissed, or they go on to the next stage, but I've noticed that and this is where this comes into play. You have presently only one full-time human rights investigator. History has shown you that that investigator typically closes ten to fifteen cases per year. The fact that you're able to close thirty-one cases of the forty new cases is a testament to the hard work of your staff, and I would agree with that comment as well. But your backlog is continuing to grow, and so you will be, I mean, you said we need a second full-time human rights investigator in order to close cases in a timely manner, and that's something I think you need to take a serious look at anyway, depends on the overall picture of everything. But I'm glad that in your report that you brought that to our attention. I think it's important. I think the work you do is important, and you have many cases. You've given a breakdown of the forty cases. Five cases were referred to the Iowa Civil Rights Commission for processing, and one case, the complainant requested a write-to-sue letter. Another nine cases were administratively closed, or the complainant withdrew their complaint, often after significant work by your staff. You still have to put the work into each case that's before you. And so I just want to point that out. I appreciate the work that the commission's doing, and I, and I hope they can keep up the work under the caseload that they have.
Thank you very much.
Karen, how many active cases are alive and well right now?
Twenty-eight, I believe.
Twenty-eight?
Yes.
Thanks. I don't know if you had any further comments.
I do not, sir.
I think, I think your report speaks for itself, though.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On the seniors advisory committee, I want to thank Freddie for all the work you've done to step in and, and really be the administrator of that committee. As the mayor has pointed out in the past few weeks, it's been difficult for the seniors advisory committee to meet and to actually get their work done this past year and a half, so I just wanted to thank Freddie for taking over that job, and hopefully we'll be able to make some appointments and, and get the seniors advisory committee back on track. The other one I wanted to just briefly comment on, the annual report of the Sioux City Parking and Skywalk System Board of Trustees. When you read their report, the accomplishments are just really, really good accomplishments that that board has had. But what's really interesting is the future undertakings and challenging, challenges that they do have with our parking situation, parking garage, LED lighting. The ramp security cameras are on order, that's good. New parking meters have been ordered. Some of the parking meters we have work, but we don't have the parts to, for replacement if the parking meters quit. That's what I got out of this report. And it's just difficult decisions to make when you're trying to do a budget, but that's what's needed, and that's what the future holds with that. So thank you for, especially with the ramp security cameras and the LED lighting. I want to thank the board for supporting that and bringing, bringing that to the attention of the council. The other thing we do that they take seriously is we meet annually. All of these boards and commissions meet annually with the city council and the mayor, and I appreciate that because that's when you can really get the updates, you can just really have dialogue, a discussion of what needs to be done, how can we improve, and how can we do better? So I appreciate that a lot. Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee. I just want, on these committees too, I want to point out, I've been the city council representative on the Sioux City, the Inclusive Sioux City Advisory Committee, and Sam Harsher, if you want to come to the podium and just hear my comments. The council, every, at the end of every year, the council and with Matthew O'Kane joining us in January, and Matthew is here today, and it's good to see you, Matthew. Thank you for attending our meeting, and I saw you last week too, and I'm sorry I didn't introduce you or say, acknowledge you, but I, I do see you here. But the council will go through, and the mayor will go through boards and committees, asking council members which ones they are interested in. And I know a year ago when we were starting the Inclusive Sioux City advisory committee, that I, I was very fortunate because I had worked hard to get this committee up and running, and I'm only in advisory capacity. It's not anything other than, I'm a non-voting member as a council representative. But we did discuss, and I don't know what's going to happen as far as appointments go, but we did discuss that Alex Waters would then become, the second year would become that advisory or that representative from the council. And I hope I'm not getting ahead of myself with those appointments, but it's, it's a good thing, especially when we have a new council member come on and an existing council member go off, it's good to go back through all those committees anyway and those boards, so that's what's going to be happening there. Your annual report too, lots of accomplishments, lots of undertakings of projects, and so it was a very good report. At first I was going to just talk about things that jumped off the page, but really, all of your goals are very important to this community. And I appreciated how thorough your annual report was, so thank you for doing that. I don't know if you wanted to make any comments or not.
I'm just happy to have a full committee, and I'm happy they are willing to do the work and volunteer their time to a worthy group, I believe, and hopefully we can make Sioux City a more inclusive and equitable place for everyone that's easy to navigate.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, that's all I have on our
Okay.
annual reports, thank you.
Civil penalties and suspensions, items seven A to seven D are resolutions scheduling hearings for proposed penalties against Joe's Mini-Mark, Come and Go, Leeds Food and Fuel, and Hy-Vee Main Street for violation of cigarette laws.
Mayor, on seven C, I need to abstain, conflict of interest.
Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specs for the South Royce Street Myers Avenue Storm Sewer Repair Project. There was a gentleman here a few weeks ago. Is he on board with what we're doing now? Do you remember that? Somebody out there was complaining that we had moved stuff and...
That's, yeah, the utility or try and think of which cable, one of the internet companies had come out and made temporary relocations prior to us doing it, or we told them not to, but yeah.
Okay, but you've talked to him and, okay.
Yep.
Thank you. B is a resolution adopting construction documents for the Stone Park Boulevard Reconstruction Project. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with DGR Engineering for the Big Sioux Pedestrian Bridge Crossing Project.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions for Matt. I just want to understand, if you could give me a summary, there were, it boiled down to two options?
Three options.
Three options for the location?
Yep.
Were those primarily driven by the anticipated or the engineer's cost estimates of doing, of doing the work on those?
The cost estimates, we did a study of the three locations, and the cost estimates were revealed after the study was completed. So we wanted to see how much it was going to cost in each of the three locations and what the pros and cons of each location were, from an engineering standpoint.
And what were the three locations?
The north one was adjacent to Empirical Foods, the Two Rivers location, and then north of the I-29 Interstate Bridge.
What was the second one, I'm sorry?
The Two Rivers, right across from Two Rivers Golf Course.
Oh.
Where the existing foot bridges. Yeah.
That's where that location, that would actually be that location?
That's the agreed-on location between the Dune CID and the City of Sioux City staff.
Okay. And how did the costs come in?
That is the, it's about 1.2 all-in for trail on both sides and the bridge, including demolition. And that was the least expensive of all three options.
It was the least?
Yes.
Expensive, at 1.2, okay. All right, that's all I have. Thank you, Matthew. Anything else?
B is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services with North Sioux City, South Dakota. C is a resolution approving a release of a portion of the property from the development agreement with HomeZinc for the Sunnybrook Road Extension and Storm Drain Project. Ten are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending a position classification manual by approving an updated job description for parks and recreation attendant. B is a resolution fixing the salary of the city manager. C is a resolution fixing the salary of the city attorney. Eleven are actions authorizing payments. A is a resolution approving fund transfers for November. B is a motion approving total payments issued in November. C is a resolution authorizing payment to HydroClean for the digester cleaning and inspection project. D is a resolution authorizing payment to LNL Builders for the Police Fire Administration Security Entrance Edition. Twelve are actions relating to purchasing. A is a resolution authorizing city manager to negotiate and purchase wastewater plant pollution insurance. And the staff revised the policy originally dated January 2nd, 2022 through January 2nd, 2023, because the new policy period is January 2nd, 2022 through January 2nd, 2025. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order to GovConnect for Newton X Hyper Converged Storage and Computer Nodes. C is a resolution awarding a purchase order to CDW Government for Microsoft Windows Server Data Center licenses. Thirteen are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Fourteens have received amendments. See the list come forward if you have any questions. Eddie, want to be heard on any of those items?
Amber, I need to abstain on thirteen A. No, excuse me, thirteen B, two A, and three B, Floyd Food and Fuel Licenses. Voting electronically. Passes for board of zero.
Appointments to boards and commissions and committees. Motion appointing Ike Rafer to the Civil Service Commission to a four-year term expiring April 7th, 2025. I'll move that. Second. Passes for zero. Sixteens and ordinance amending chapter 25.07, definitions of the municipal code to amend the definition of animal boarding. P&amp;Z recommends approval. First consideration approved December 13th, 2021. I'll move second reading.
Second.
Anyone to be heard?
You want to go first? It's your deal, right?
My name is Megan Thompson, and the address of the Cat Cafe will be 520 Nebraska Street. Last meeting, it passed, but I know you guys were a little confused a little bit about, or like wanting to propose to do a limit on how many cats. And we are, we were thinking about it, and we think we should put a limit at forty cats at maximum.
How many?
Forty.
Forty?
Forty.
Wow.
Well, these cats.
How many square feet do you have?
We have 785 square feet. We are only wanting to have thirty cats at maximum at a time, but in the future, if we wanted to have, build a kitten room, because kittens, any, any cat younger than six months has to, they have to be separated from the cats that are older than six months. So if we wanted to have like a kitten room, we would bring in ten kittens in the.
These cats neutered?
Yes, they will all be neutered and spayed.
Did I read that they're going to have a separate space?
Yes.
And how much is the separate space that they'll be in? Do you know how many square feet that is?
The, so the cat room is 785 square feet.
Oh, the cat room, okay.
Yep.
Okay, questions? Any other? Okay.
Well, I do have a couple of questions, because I was going.
For her or for?
For you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, will the cats ever be spending the night?
Yes, they, they will stay there all the time until that cat gets adopted.
Okay, so then they adopt them through the Humane Society, though?
Yes, we are working with the Humane Society, Noah's Hope, and the other animal rescue in Sioux City. So wherever the cat came from, they will take, if they want to adopt that cat, they will take the adoption papers to that facility and then adopt the cat through there, come pick it up at our, at our building.
And as far as the cats, will they just roam around this 785 square feet during the daytime? Just, you just come on in and?
Yes.
Sit on a sofa or something? I'm sorry, I wasn't at last week's meeting, so I'm just trying to catch up.
That's okay. Yes, so there's, we're going to have seating in there. We will even have shelves on the wall for the cats to climb on, like type of thing. But when you walk in through the building, it's going to be double doors, and then you can pick to go into the Cat Cafe, the cat room or the coffee shop. So there will be like another, so the cats can't get out if someone opens the door, so they will be able to, like if they get out through the cat room door, they still won't be able to get into the coffee shop or outdoors.
And will every cat have its own little kennel, or how will they be left to sleep at night when somebody goes home?
No, they, they can sleep on the beds or the couches or the.
Okay, so it's wide open, and they'll just be at their leisure if there's a basket or whatever?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And are you confident that we have all, a lot of cats, you know, thirty or forty of them at any given time?
Yes, we, we want to have between fifteen and thirty, so thirty, we don't need to have thirty cats in there at a time, but I would say that would be our maximum adult cats that we can have in that space.
Okay. And then plus, the extra would be in case you get kittens?
Yes.
Gotcha.
I worked at a vet hospital when I was a kid, and I'm not a real cat guy, I can tell you after that experience, so not a chihuahua guy either. Five percent of German Shepherd. But what kind of ventilation, because cats have a very distinct odor?
Yes. This room is going to have a separate HVAC system, and HVAC runs. As of now, we're not required to put in a filtration system, but it is going to be built as if we will need to put one in, in the future. To keep the smell away or from building up, we are going to be cleaning on the hour, and then when an employee comes in in the morning, they'll be doing like a deep clean, cleaning the floors, the rugs. And we also are going, so the floor is concrete, so we're going to have a big area rug, so we don't have to put carpet or hardwood flooring in there. And that area rug is actually going to be washable, so every week we will be washing that, so the cats smell. We can kind of keep that down.
And will the revenue from the coffee shop sustain the Cat Cafe separate site itself with supplies, or?
The, so with the cuddling fee, we call it, someone has to pay for a ticket to go into the cat room and cuddle either for thirty minutes or an hour. There'll be different prices, and kids will also have different prices and rules. The coffee shop is going to sustain like their, that equipment and all that stuff, but, so that cuddling fee will be providing the food, the litter, and cat supplies that we may need.
It's almost like two separate businesses. So it's almost like two separate businesses? One will sustain itself, and the cuddling fees will sustain the cat food and the kitty litter and all that kind of thing?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. It's 520 Nebraska, is that the Bluebird Flats building?
Yes.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
We have the three spaces. If you look to the right of the front doors of the Bluebird Flats, those three storefronts.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Good afternoon, folks. My name is Preston Moore. I'm the Iowa State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. I wanted to give Councilman Gretkin a good animal person send-off. I thought you would appreciate it.
Thanks, Preston.
If I'd made a return visit for you. Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
I, I'm coming to you all today to follow up on an email I sent admittedly kind of late in this process. I sent it to the city and to Nicole this morning. I'm here today just to try to provide some policy guidance to the city. What Megan's looking at doing is a pretty novel idea, but it is something that's springing up throughout the country as communities, including Des Moines here in Iowa, work to find new homes for cats, especially the adoptable cats in their cities. I came today to provide a little bit of policy guidance to help hopefully prevent the city from running into some additional problems that we see when, when we open up ordinances for retail sales of animals. We're highly recommending that the city do something with Megan to allow a Cat Cafe. We think it'd be great to allow the rescues and shelters to have another outlet for adoptable animals, but we are urging the city to also look at adopting language to not permit the sale of commercially bred dogs and cats. We call these large-scale facilities puppy mills, kitten mills, if you want to call them, large-scale commercial breeders, however you want to call it. These are the businesses that sell puppies and kittens to pet shops that would normally operate, as I think a lot of us know, a pet store. Those facilities that produce those animals are licensed by the USDA. And here in Iowa, unfortunately, just this summer and fall, we saw, I think, one of the most egregious violations of that system with the Daniel Gingrich case here in the state. That case, where the USDA and the Department of Justice shut that breeder down, is unfortunately the exception. We see a lot of repeat offenders within the USDA licensing system within the state and throughout the country. We also see a lot of potential harmful diseases that are transmitted through these facilities to people. Just here in Iowa, in Iowa City, there is a pet store where two years ago, there was a little girl, who's I think under three years old at the time, contracted antibiotic-resistant Campylobacter from a dog she purchased from that pet store. She was rushed to the hospital. Her father was also taken to the hospital and lost about 20 pounds just from this illness. And it's unfortunately something that's linked exactly to this industry through the brokers and the breeders that sell these pet stores. Along with the commercial sale of dogs and cats, an issue that the city should be really cognizant of is the financing angle that often comes with these stores. It's unfortunate, but a lot of folks go into these stores, cuddle with a cute puppy or a kitten, they fall in love, they're presented with a contract, sign on the line, you can take the puppy home, and before you know it, again, these are real examples from the state, we see people with 188% interest fees on a $3,000 financing of a little puppy. I wish that it wasn't the case, but that business model is tied directly to the pet store model. That's how these people make money, by selling $5,000 puppies. Finally, with any sort of regulation, you're looking at this, and I caution the city to pay particular attention to this part, the state legislature in the last two years has attempted to preempt local control over animal enterprises of any kind. So even what I think are the, the common sense restrictions on the number of cats, say, in a building, is something that has been attempted to be taken away from the city at the state level in the last few years. That's something that we have spoken out against pretty, pretty substantially. We believe in local control for animal issues, so that you all can protect your city and your citizens. So in conclusion, I have sent some potential definitions and language that I would love the city to take a look at. As always, our team is, is happy and willing to help the city at no cost. Our legal team can help answer questions if, if they are there. So thank you for your time. Congratulations again.
Thank you. Must be new to Iowa to think that you would, the state legislator, legislators would ever try to take any power away from us. It must be. You just moved here?
Nope, I will be going into my fourth legislative session, and that's a, a bill that unfortunately we have fought against the last two, and there are a couple that have tried to go not as far in the last four years. Yeah, I, I feel for you as a local leader. I sure do.
Thank you.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. As the council member memo stated, staff is solely recommending second reading. As we've also been made aware of some concerns, at last week's council meeting, council directed us to work with Downtown Partners. We've included the results of that informal survey from their board. They have similar concerns. They all believe that the Cat Cafe may be a good idea, but it does open up the door for the downtown pet stores, the way the definition is being proposed to you within this text amendment. And majority of those concerns are in regards to those pet stores, overnight stay of dogs and cats and other breeds of animals, as well as any disruptive noises in buildings where we have residential mixed use, as in Blue Flats or many other downtown buildings that have been converted into mixed-use residential. There's a concern with disruptive noises, although we feel that may be more of a landlord/tenant issue and concern that would be addressed that way.
Well, you know what? It's more than a landlord/tenant issue, because if that thing gets out of hand, guess who's going to, we're in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So we should address that.
Sure, and, and that's why we're asking for second reading only. As you know, this was a petitioner applied for text amendment. It was not brought forward by staff, so ultimately, we will have to have council make a decision on it. It was an application submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We actually have a meeting set up on Wednesday, I believe, with Megan and her team to discuss the concerns that were brought forward and see if we can come to some resolution. Maybe it's coming back with a different version of a text amendment. Maybe it's deleting it and starting over with some new language with a joint application with city staff and Megan as a business owner. And so we'd like to, you know, these next two weeks, some additional time to try to make some resolutions.
I can tell you one that I'm going to be supportive of, and that's limiting the number. If you have 40 cats and 40 or 50 people in a 785-square-foot room, that's not going to work. I mean, if you've got 40 cats, your intent is to try to get 40 cats petted, right? I mean, that's why you would have 40 cats. And I think that's overcrowding at its, anyway, I hope you come back with some sort of limitation on the number of cats, because I'm probably not going to support it if it's, if there's no number in there.
And Jeff, and I apologize, this is probably the busiest time of year for me, so I'm trying to keep up as best as I can, but the, the end of December is just really tough. But I think Preston Moore also helped us on other issues previously, which, Preston, that was a, that was a huge help to me, anyway, and I appreciated your input, because it made sense. So Preston, and I haven't really, I just glanced at it now, but a model ordinance you might want to take a look at that he attached, it came in at 7:15 this morning, but I just, again, I haven't.
Yeah, and I haven't had a chance to see that.
No, that's, well, sometimes I can at least read it before I get in here at 4 o'clock, but it didn't, it didn't happen today with all the demands that are being made for year-end things. But it looked like it would be helpful as well, so I don't know. I'm glad you're going to have your meeting. I think we're going to try to be as supportive as we can be, but without having these unintended consequences that Preston has raised and apparently Downtown Partners has raised, because I also glanced through your memo. So I hope that gives you time to really make sure we do this correctly. And thank you again, Preston, for your help.
Thank you.
Voting on second reading only.
Only second, we're not going to third. Means Pete won't get to vote on the third reading, but.
Well, we may need you on January 3rd.
I'll be here. I won't be, but. Can I sit in your seat? You bet. Passes four to zero. Seventeen's a, eye on the right. Seventeen's a hearing resolution adopting amendment number three to the Hamilton Wesley Two Urban Revitalization Area Plan. I'll move that.
Second?
Hearing's open. Anyone to be heard? Seeing none, the hearing is closed. Passes four to zero. Eighteen's an ordinance amending chapter 26.170, Hamilton Wesley Two Urban Revitalization Area Plan by extending the expiration date to December 31st, 2026. I'll move first reading.
Second?
Passes four to zero. Anybody opposed waiving statutory rule?
No.
I'll move that.
Second?
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Second and third, I'll move it.
Second?
Passes four to zero. Nineteen's an ordinance amending chapter 12.12 Water Works Municipal Code to Establish the 2022 Water Rates for South Sioux City and Dakota Dunes. First consideration approved December 6th, 2021. Second consideration approved December 13th, 2021. Somebody want to move that?
I'll move it. Second? Brad gave us a memo for the past six years of what the rates were doing with these two communities, and I, I found that to be helpful, Brad, if you want to make some comments on it, as far as how the rates have, how they have gone the past six years.
Brad Pitts, Utilities Director. I, I knew there was a year in there when we deferred it, but it was at the agreeance of, sheds a little bit of light on what the rates have done in the pa, in the past six years.
But there have been some year, well, it's been some years where they've increased.
Right.
Quite a bit, and then other years where they've decreased. But it seemed like there were more years that we had increases than years that showed decreases.
Also, you have raised our rates in those years, too. We haven't ever had a decrease. Go ahead, I'm.
Brad, what's the greatest reason for the decrease, then?
This year, it was that we had lower expenditures, and we produced more water, so.
You're getting more and more efficient at it?
It just, it, yes, to an extent. I don't have the exact answers for that, but we pumped more water and we spent less money in, in the end is, is, is the reason for the decrease for this year.
Right, well, that's good news.
So what's my rate going to go down, then?
Like it to go down?
Well, I don't know. I'm the guy with the fancy formula. I'm just a guy sitting up there and doesn't know anything. Everybody vote?
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Passes three to one, I vote no. Twenty's a resolution authorizing city staff to enter in a settlement agreements and agree to the terms of the Iowa opioid, opioid allocation memorandum of understanding. I'll move that.
I'll second it. I have a couple of comments for Caleb. Now I know where you've been for the past few months.
Gosh, I guess.
Volumes and volumes. What I wanted to point out and make sure you confirm this in your report, you said signing on to participate in the settlement does not guarantee that the city will receive any money. Correct?
That, that's correct. Mayor and Council.
The state of Iowa's going to get some, Caleb, I want you to know that.
One, one more time, I'm sorry.
The state of Iowa will get some.
Mayor and Council, Caleb Kristof, Assistant City Attorney. Good afternoon, and thank you for bringing that comment. Basically, the city isn't guaranteed to get any directly, but what happens by virtue of the state entering into the settlement agreements with the listed companies, it opens the door for non-litigating political subdivisions. The, you know, because 67 counties actually entered into litigation, the remaining counties will have the opportunity to get in on the settlement agreements by way of participation in this manner. And the cities within those counties then need to sign on to it individually as well as we have. And we need to work with our county in order to get a piece of, of the county's share, I suppose. And I've been talking with the county attorney as well, and are, are of, of the same mind as to the effort here, so.
Another case of the federal government having a one-size-fits-all. We have a meth problem in this community that's unbelievable. The chief tells me the opioids are coming, but we have a meth problem, but we don't have federal money or any settlement money for meth. We only worry about opioids, because Ohio and Indiana were blanketed with that stuff. And it's, I mean, I'm glad you're participating, but it's foolishness that we can't have a methamphetamine policy in this country, because the Midwest, that's the problem. We don't have a, a good financial way to attack that problem, so anyway.
Don't. Is meth kind of homemade?
Well, I, I said that to the chief, but he now assures me that they can make it so much cheaper in Mexico, they're shipping it up. We don't make it in bathtubs in rural Iowa anymore.
Right, but we don't have anybody to sue in this case, like the.
I understand that.
I mean, that's why we don't get any money.
No.
Because we have no one to litigate.
Forfeiture's in law.
Doesn't really matter, though, if the federal government recognizes that we have a policing problem in this country.
I agree.
They gave federal money to Ohio and Indiana long before this settlement came. They were getting fed money for the opioid, because Ohio was the worst. And if you check, they got money early in the process through the federal government.
Thanks for your good work, Caleb.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Passes four to zero. Twenty-one is a resolution approving amended and restated city nepotism policy to include personal relationships in the workplace. Did you want to defer this?
I would like to, yes.
That's okay?
That's okay with us as well.
Move, we defer till, when are we?
January 3rd?
January 10th.
Second?
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Okay, and then 22, are we deferring that, or are we voting on that? That one has to be voted on, right?
Yes.
Yeah. 22's resolution authorizing a 2080 agreement for medical emergency response services for South Sioux City, deferred from December 13th, 2021. I'll move that.
Second?
You got a little quick on the gun there, huh?
Wow. No pressure here. It's like the old days.
Guess you're ready to go home, so am I. Passes four to zero. Okay, 23's a resolution adopting the supplements to the SUDAS standard specifications and design manuals. You better move that one, I wouldn't want it to be on record.
You looking at me?
Yeah.
I'll move 23.
I'll second it.
Talked to all the contractors, right?
No.
No, Dave said he did last week.
No, he didn't. He did not say that.
Dave, you better come on up.
We had a group of contractors and a group of developers, engineers that we spoke to. We did not speak to every contractor. We have over 40 contractors that we send this to, supplements to, so on our list, we don't invite.
Yeah, five that do the majority of the work.
Yep.
Yeah.
And are they informed?
No.
We, we, we didn't, we didn't invite everybody, because we wanted a productive meeting. And actually, only one person showed up, so.
The guys, I'm, I already voted.
One of the five contractor, people that we invited showed up, so, and then the same happened with the engineers.
Does this have, does this have to be voted on today? I mean, could we have some meetings with them to? Sure, instead, doing it after the fact?
Let's just reach out to them again.
We can do that, absolutely. I mean, it, it just, it just means we, we stay to our old specifications for contracts that are currently being let.
Well, I'd like to adopt it, but I'd like you to reach out to them again, so.
We just adopted two today, so they'll, they'll all be on the old, old ones, too. Every time we defer it, it just keeps, I mean. Every time we defer it, it just keeps, I mean, it's up to you guys.
Well, you're saying you sent the copies out.
Well, just a minute. Let me ask this question before you ask that question.
All right.
What would have changed on eight A and B? What would have changed?
Eight A and B.
Well, those are your two contracts, and you're telling me it's a problem. Tell me what would have changed them, on those two contracts?
Whatever's in, in our supplement. But we had, as far as the changes in the compaction requirements that we went, that CTS brought forward, um, uh.
No, it doesn't.
All the items that were listed in the, in the, in what was changed.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, if, if this passes today, let's still reach out and have those meetings.
They'll all get new copies of them, yeah.
Because you can, because you can always come back, then, if some.
Yep, we can always amend it again.
Something real troubling, we could come back with an amendment, don't you think, Pete?
Yeah, I.
Wise one.
Yeah.
All right.
This was the process.
It's Christmas time. Whole spring's eternal around here.
Dan, it is the process that went through, we, we, before we did the process, we reviewed it with the Public Works team, and that's what was agreed on, who we were inviting and, and who we were going to meet with.
Well, that's kind of why I'm looking to Pete, because he's on your public.
Yeah, the key, the key from my perspective, Dan, is, is, uh, they were invited. Maybe there was one that missed, uh, or didn't get an invitation, but for me, it's, uh, supporting Public Works and their recommendations, and they have been discussing these issues and working, uh, with contractors for an extended period of time. And, uh, again, the worst that happens, if it doesn't work out right, you come back and you amend it again.
Again.
But it's.
Christmas time. We should all have hope.
We should have. We should have, but I.
But once it makes a net manual, it ain't ever coming out. I've been around here too long.
Well, uh, well, then it's probably our responsibility to point that out, but, but the other, the other issue really is, is that these are the recommendations that staff is bringing to us. We should support staff, see how staff, how, how it works out.
That's not.
That's not the case?
Well, you should support staff, but remember, SUDAS is a statewide deal. These are personal modifications that the local guys have come up with. A lot of people work out of the SUDAS manual, and that's it.
Have we, have we made any amendments or adjustments to this document because of meetings and ideas from contractors, locals?
Yes, usually it comes.
And I thought we had.
Yeah.
So I think that's a good.
They all come out of bumps in the road that we, we hit. And, I mean, a lot of them came, a lot of the, the, the supplement came out of the difference between our, our old specifications and when we adopted SUDAS.
I, I support the work they're doing, so I'm, I'll vote yes and aye.
That was a recommendation from the Public Works team?
Yes. I, I, well, I hesitate to speak for Alex, but I'm pretty sure Alex is in agreement. He was at the meeting last week when we discussed again.
But I mean, we discussed it before we ever started the process.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Julie, I think we should, I, I guess I'm comfortable with that, as long as we do have, um, channel to bring it back if something isn't working.
And I think you'll have another good voice, because I think somebody else may join that team here next year.
Good.
Me.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Passes three to one. Kind of a shock. Citizen concerns. Anybody in the audience to be heard? Name an address, please.
Randy Giles, three, three, six, seven, six, South Ridge Road, Sioux City, Iowa. So a couple of things. One is I'm really excited about the Cat Cafe, and I'm really excited that Preston was able to come to talk about the ordinance, because that was my concern, is just how it's written. Um, and then I can't, I just, Councilmember Gretkin, we're going to miss you very, very much, and I wish you so much luck. You've been so amazing to work with, and it's just been a pleasure. And as a, as a citizen and as our council member, I know you're going to make the city shine, so thank you so much. And to everybody for you guys always listening. And, uh, Councilmember Moore, I look forward to twenty twenty-two and us working more on the firework ordinances. Thank you so much, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Same to you. Thank you for all that you have done.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Mark Solheim. I live at twenty-nine oh nine Garrettson Avenue. I'd like to echo many of the sentiments that, uh, Randy has, uh, said. Mr. Gretkin, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your service.
For your participation.
Well, we got to do what we, we see, feel like we have to do and we need to do. I want to thank you for your service. I want to thank you for your common sense. I want to thank you for your support in our efforts to make the lives of veterans with PTSD a little bit easier to bear. Beyond that, I'd like to wish you all a very Merry Christmas. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
You too, Mark. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Anyone else?
Okay, Pete, this is your last time getting to do this, so. And Alex isn't here. Take as much time as you want.
No, I, I, I really don't have a whole lot more to say, except, uh, I'm very thankful for having, again, the opportunity to work with, uh, all of the employees of city government. I, I, I hope and, and pray for the future that more people get involved and, uh, come directly to council and have an opportunity to interact, because, uh, your input is really taken seriously, and, and people up here actually care a great deal about the work that they're doing. And, um, a lot of good things have happened over the last two terms, and, and, um, in no small part to staff. You know, it's easy for council to give a little direction, but, but staff really steps up and has done some great jobs. And, uh, Mr. Padmore, I really appreciate, uh, having the opportunity to work with you, sir. And, and, uh, I just feel really, really good as time continues to move by about our decision in February of twenty fourteen to make it a permanent position for you, because, uh, I do think, and God bless all city managers, and the eleven, I think I can recall from my time around City Hall, I, I think you're, uh, right at the top of that list and just do a great job for the city. And, and I think that makes the employees eager to want to perform well, too. So thank, I want to thank everybody for all the support over the years, and especially council for, you know, helping to guide me and listen to me and let me spout off once in a while. But, uh, it's been a great relationship, and I, I hope I can find a way to help even pay back more to get involved somewhere down the line. But thank everybody for all you've done, and, and Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Julie.
Well, I'd like to say something to Pete. Um, I was traveling when you had your open house, so I wasn't able to attend. And then I wrote a little something, and I was going to send it to the girls, have somebody read it. And then I thought, you know what? I'll just save it. So as, uh, you know, I'm finishing my second year. It's just around the corner, and I wanted to thank you for all the support and mentorship that you have shown me over these last few years, two years. You know, onboarding to city council is not a small task. Um, so much to learn, so much to do, so many meetings, um, many things to catch up on. And with COVID taking kind of over my first year, a lot of things were mode or a lot of things were kind of delayed a little bit. And I just feel like you took the time to help me kind of catch up on what had happened in the past, and how we've been doing it, and how we're changed, and things like that. Um, and you've always taken time before meetings and after meetings. We've spent many times in the hallways or somewhere. Oh, wait a minute, what time is it, you know?
Yeah.
Wondering about, you know, how we used to do things, and a lot of times that's been a little bit of a Sioux City history lesson for me. And I've always enjoyed it. I've always taken something away when we've had a good conversation. And a little ed, entertaining for me as well, listening to your old cop stories as an officer, catching kids and catching speeders, and, um, kind of explaining to me, you know, uh, how you mentored people back, back then when you were on duty. Um, one thing that you always say to me, surround yourself with good people. And you said it today again. You said things, your job will be more enjoyable. You'll go home every day smiling if you're surrounded by good people. And Pete, you know that you are one of the good people. And I thank you so much. I've enjoyed.
Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Pete, thank you. You will be missed. I've enjoyed the past eight years because you are as honest as the day is long. Uh, common sense was used to describe you earlier. Yes, you have common sense. Um, I've enjoyed serving with you. And even though our votes sometimes were opposite, we just moved on, and the next week, we had new, new agenda. And I appreciated that attitude that you had.
Thank you.
Keep moving forward. And so you and your family, you, you will, uh, I'm sorry in some respects, so Pete, that you didn't have a three Pete.
We had that campaign ready.
Well, in twenty thirteen, it was Pete, and then twenty seventeen, repeat, but he didn't do the three Pete. But we've got four more years, and I don't know if that's going to be good or bad with some people, but, but seriously, you will be missed. And I just so much enjoyed working with you and, and talking with you. And I'm going to keep in mind, one thing that you did consistently is you reminded us, you, you would say, I wish we could have more discussion in front of, be more transparent, more discussion in front of the, the people that we serve. And, you know, there's some, some topics that just have to go to closed session, and we respect that. But as far as other items, and I've tried to do that by, by adding something to items where something will jump out at me. I can't do it on all items, because I wouldn't be popular with.
Someone.
With someone. And I won't name Bob Scott, because I don't want to get in trouble. But, you know, there's a three-minute rule, and I think he even imposes that on me. But seriously, I, but I'm going to keep that in mind.
Thank you.
I will always keep that in mind, so.
Well, you know, I, I want to, I do want to give credit to the mayor, uh, for the first bit of advice that I received. And that was in December before, it would have been December of thirteen, before I started, and Bob called, and he said, you know, we probably had some healthy discussions before when you were working across the street. But he said, I, I just want to tell you congratulations, and, and ask that you, you vote, you know, uh, the way that you believe will be in the interest of the vast majority of the citizens in our community. And that's what we're really serving for, or who we are serving. And, um, and he said, when the voting's done, and I walk out, he said, it's all done. Next week, we start new. And, and, uh, Mayor, you've been right on spot for eight years with me, and you allow me to, you know, share information, and you share yours willingly. And, uh, I think it's been a great relationship, and, and I really got lucky with the people that were up here that, but thanks, Dan. I really appreciate it.
I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I'm going to take some of Alex's time. And one thing I.
You're, you're running at two and a half minutes, so.
Yeah. Knowledge, Matthew, this is what you have to look forward to, Matthew. Looking forward to having you come onboard. We'd even save some items for you when you get back, or when you get here. Um, but I also, last week, last week, I just, my mind was on other things. But I just also want to add, in so many respects, for the past year and a half, two years, it's been a very tough year for a lot of people, but in particular for our mayor, because he lost his mom on December sixth. She was, those of you that know, knew the mayor's mother, she was extremely active in this community, and she attended so many events. And I just know it's going to be hard for our mayor coming into the Christmas season and, and New Year's. Um, you know, the first of everything is just tough, and I, I'll be praying for you and your family and, and just hoping that you can get through that, because it is tough, because your mother was so active. Um, I, I will miss her, too. We had some good discussions about you, but I can't go public with. But it's a, but it's a huge loss for you. The last thing I want to do, and you can just gavel at me anytime you want, but I want to take the opportunity to address something that Pete was very instrumental in, and I like to think I was, and you were, and past councils. It's come up, and I want to just use this opportunity. You, you all know the American Rescue Plan Act. We have forty million, roughly forty million dollars allocated to the city of Sioux City. Twenty million dollars was received June fifteenth of this year, twenty twenty-one. A year from June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, on June fifteen, twenty twenty-two, we'll get the balance of the twenty million dollars. The council met, and we even had, and, and I think we've done a, a fine job of being transparent about this, but I just want to, I just want to cap it and then get into some other, something else I want to share. Um, but in August of this year, we allocated a majority of those funds to infrastructure improvements. We have sewer, list of items, water, stormwater of the forty million. Under public health, negative economic impacts, we have two and a half million dollars that we allotted to that category. On broadband, we have a million dollars. The balance of it is all for infrastructure. And we do believe, as a council and a mayor, we do believe that will make a huge difference in this community going forward. But what I want to point out, because when I came on the council with Pete in twenty fourteen, and this gets to some of my point about what we've done, um, and I can't remember how we used to put it, Mayor, but, but when I came on the council, they said, we're about, and Dave, don't come out of your chair at me. I'm just throwing out round numbers, but we're, we're several years, let me put it that way, several years, several decades behind in keeping our streets and infrastructure up to date. And we keep falling behind, because to the credit of the council, I think, we've held the tax levy, uh, we've held it constant, or we've reduced it somewhat. When we have our budget hearings in January and February, talk about serious work, we take that all seriously. We really do. And we wrangle over whether we can increase part, this department, that department. But what we did, this is with the budgets we had, where tax levies were held either the same or reduced. Now, I got these, this, these numbers, Dave, and I, from your department, and I appreciated that. Before completed projects from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, in reconstruction projects, the total project cost was just under forty-eight million dollars in project costs that the city spent on reconstruction. And that added up to about fifteen miles of streets. That's, that's really, when you think we held the budget line, that's a huge, huge accomplishment. Forty-eight million dollars worth of projects, fifteen, just over fifteen miles. Resurfing, resurfacing and paving projects, which I probably have had the most comments from citizens, saying that is so nice when you resurface our streets. And I agree. I really do. And the resurfacing and paving projects, those totaled just under five million dollars for just under five miles of streets, for a total of just under fifty-three million dollars for our twenty seventeen to twenty twenty. Projects currently under construction, reconstruction, we have about, we have just under thirteen million dollars going on with just under two miles of, uh, streets. And for resurfacing, we have a million two, uh, with two, just under two miles, for a total of fourteen million dollars currently going on. And then we have additional projects programmed for FY twenty-two, reconstruction and resurfacing. And Julie Shaner has, from time to time, when we've had these resurfacing projects brought before us by the city engineer and by Public Works Director, Dave Carney, you have spoken up at the end of the meeting, saying, listen to this, folks, we're, we're doing X million, million dollars on our infrastructure improvement. So I just wanted to take that opportunity, because a lot has happened, a lot is going on. And we hear you. I, I really want to make that very clear. We hear all of our citizens, even, I hear myself. I hit a pothole, and I don't know. My wife says, why do you have to hit all the potholes? You just kind of go, you go that way. I said, no, I'm staying in my lane. Um, but I'm with you. And the mayor and the city council, we all hear you loud and clear. But we've had those kind of numbers show that we mean business. And we will step that up with the, with the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we will be allocating for those infrastructure projects. So with that, I think that covers everything for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be brief, because I've got to go to emergency management meeting tonight. But Pete, I just. tonight. But Pete, I just want to, as, as I said the other night at your deal, you've been a gentleman, and this job I've served in a long time. And it's, we don't, myself included, we don't necessarily always act like gentlemen and ladies. And when that happens, it's to the detriment of the community, not to the betterment of the community. So thank you for the example that you gave for us the last eight years.
Thank you, sir.
With that, I move we adjourn.
Sec, why don't you second that, Pete?
Second.
Moore?
Aye.
Shaner?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Gretkin?
You're on the clock till the third.
Gretkin.
All right. What about it?